Well, thank you all for being here today. We, as opposed to some of the other sessions, don't have quite as ambitious an agenda as we've had in the past, therefore the last is just as important. So, unless at this point this hour has been what they do.
Holy Father, we are gathered again to conduct the business of Van Alstine City Council. Again, and as always, we thank you for the blessings that you bestowed on our community, on our citizens, on our staff, on our volunteers, and everyone in our community, and we are thankful. We ask that you, again, give us the knowledge, the wisdom, and the ability to carry out the duties of this council and of the city to carry out these duties in your will. In your Son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas's life, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I'm number four. This is communication, this is Cooper.
All right, just one second. I want to make sure I got the dates right. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the daughters of the American Revolution. I'm a part of the Citroen Chamber here in Van Alstine, and I wanted to be sure and invite you, Mayor Rowley, to come to our meeting and sign the proclamation for Constitution Week, if you're able to do that. And I'm afraid I'll do it in the dark on today, so I'm just going to leave this here. September 3rd is when our meeting, I'm sorry, September 5th is the 30th. I have two meetings that we have, Constitution Week and 5th. And if you don't mind coming and reading the proclamation, we can have a tear, send you a copy of it. You sort of print it up in the nice piece of parchment that you can sign. And if you want to go ahead and say that at the meeting next month, at the Council meeting, that would be nice. You know, just because it is a national holiday, that's about the national. I don't know if you call it a holiday, but it's the week of September 17 through the 23rd is the National Constitution Week.
Oh, we can recognize it.
That's what it is, I'm sure, but it was enacted several decades ago by the lobbying that DAR did to help people recognize how important the Constitution is. Then there's another date. We sponsor, as you may know, last year, on December 15th, I'm sorry. It should be that day. It says the 12th, but I'm not sure if you're... It should be on the Saturday, the 14th, I think, if I'm looking at it right.
Will we give this a part of the review?
I will, I understand. I want to hear everybody on the council. I'm just kind of giving you a heads up that you'll be hearing from us. And during that time this week, last year, we had a great turnout. If anybody doesn't know what it is, DAR sells wreaths for people to put on the graves of veterans in our cemetery. Last year, we sold close to 600. We have, we're doing research and keep finding more and more veterans buried in our Van Alstine Cemetery. Now we have over 700 that we've located, and we have already sold, at this point, over 700 wreaths for our victims.
Please keep that rule of communication so we can talk about this.
And I'm no longer the person in charge, so I'll pass the word once. But October, I mentioned it at this meeting.
Well, that was the only one. Is there any other public message? At this time, we have one more, I don't know if five, but it's a presentation to citizens here at the council. Chief Marlowe, would you...
Mr. White, I'm not even ready to hear it. He hit it before me, he's going to be here, he's going to be something. I'm going to go ahead and publicly recognize him for his actions on July 5th. Mr. White put himself at personal risk assisting one of our officers who was dealing with an individual that was high on narcotics and was fighting the officer. He stopped and assisted that officer, and we were able to do, we were able to place that individual in custody without getting injured. So, we wanted to publicly recognize him for the citizen public safety work.
What was his name?
Craig White. He is a citizen here in Van Alstine.
Super. You know, there's an awful lot of names associated with these things that happen in a lot of places. This just goes to show that really people's part over whether they've been serving, or whether they've been affected for life, hopefully some people will do that.
Thank you.
I'm number six. According to Chapter 551 of the Parks and Government Code, all meetings of the City Council may meet in a closed executive session pursuant to the applicable laws. Pursuant to the following section of the Parks and Government Code, annotated Subchapter 551, the council will enter into executive session to discuss the following items. Section 1.087, Economic Development Negotiation Regarding One Project Green and Two Rizlin. At this time, at 18:38, will the current executive session.
Yeah, so I will make a motion to direct the City Manager to move forward on Project Green incentive package as discussed in executive session.
Motion second, further discussion. All favor of the majority. Number eight. Consider taking the action necessary regarding approval finished from July 16th, 2019 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion, Joe.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All favor of the majority. Number nine. Is here Parks' master plan presentation. Is everyone here to speak on it? Yeah, why yes.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name's Elizabeth Applecraft. I work for my associates, and we've been... We've been working with your staff and your park board. I've seen a lot of friendly park board faces here. They've had a plan that we've been working for the past several months, looking at your park system, taking an inventory, and hopefully you guys come up with an action plan for the next several years as you're growing in Van Alstine. So, what I want to do tonight is give you a brief overview of the plan. Here's a hard copy of it, and Lane has shown it. He'll screen it out. And I think there is a presentation that's going to come up here. There we go. So, there's just a few slides. I want to open you the process, give you an idea of what's in the book. So, where is what we began seven months ago? We took this plan in a couple different phases. The first one, we really had a good idea of what we had in the park system. And so, phase one is your inventory and needs assessment. So, we started with just some base mapping, and really just boots on the ground, getting out and seeing your entire park system. We photographed it. We worked with city staff to understand what your facilities are today, what's in the system. We started comparing that with some national standards so that then you have a goal to reach over the next several years in your park system. And probably the most important part of this step is the end of phase one, which will be our public need assessment. So, that's one where we have some reasoning sessions, several votes from the public, we're able to come out that they're input into what they'd like to see in the park system over the next several years. And then several votes in this room, I do remember, we had a citizen survey, and we got a very strong response back. So, that was great input into the plan, which led us then to phase two, where we start to write an action plan, make some master plan recommendations for where some of the priorities that come out of your citizen survey, they go in your park system. We then went for an implementation plan, where we start to assign budget numbers to the different priorities so you can know what costs would be associated with implementing the plan. And then those last two steps, or what I hold in my hand is the preliminary and then the final master plan. So, we submitted the preliminary, park board reviewed it in detail, we made some edits, and now what we're looking at tonight is the final. So, here's the master plan. I just put a snapshot of it. It's got some mapping in here that helps understand where the priorities that are listed will go in your system. And then it's got this implementation plan. Now, in these books, it's more of an 11-by-17 gold dollar. I know it's kind of hard where you go there on that slide. But all those colored card-coded columns are the action plan items that came out of the citizen survey. They include things like playgrounds, lighting in parks, practice fields, benches, hiking bike trails. Those are all those ran very high in most park systems, especially the ones that are growing, like Van Alstine is. The purple or the blue columns, those are all the parks in your system. So, now to the dots showing where we suggest playgrounds go, how much they would cost. And then the green is appropriately colored because it lists some different funding sources that you could go after to match some of your city funds. And then that orange column is a timeline. Will this be a one- to two-year item? Will this be a three- to five-year item? Or will this be a longer-term priority? So, there were three categories of park facility types that we had mapped out. High priorities, ones that the citizens, et cetera, in high need. We've gone through moderate priorities, so those are medium priorities. And then we also have low priorities, which are just longer-term items. Some of those include a recreation center. A dog park is there. This dog, the animal theater, even a veterans memorial showed up. And so, then these are just some example photos of what some of your high priority items might be. Number one, Elizabeth's playground. That's really no surprise because you're a growing community. You've got new families coming in. You've got growing families. Playgrounds will continue to be popular here for a while. Lighting in parks showed up as your second highest priority. That's all the way from athletic lighting down to pedestrian lighting or trails for night use. Outdoor multipurpose fields. We live in North Texas, and it is high-shoot sports zone here. And that is really showing up in your survey for Van Alstine as well. So, any kind of multipurpose field for all kinds of sports, including football, soccer, other field sports. Practice fields. This is something that I don't think any community that has enough of. So, everybody always needs a place to practice. Bitches. You know, really just simple, sitting along a trail, enjoying a park. That showed up as a high priority, have some benches in your park system. And then hiking bike trails, of course. That's growing in popularity across the metro place. And it's really a high recreational value for a low-capital investment. You can get concrete on the ground, and you can serve all ages. You can serve the senior population. You can serve kids that run bikes. That trail is popular for everyone. And then some of the other priorities that showed up. Ponds, fishing, more pavilions where folks can have family reunion or group gatherings and birthday parties in parks. Just individual picnicking, and a veterans memorial showed up as well. Now, one of the last things that I want to show you is we were tasked with taking the priority items that came out of the action plan and looking specifically at how spatially we might rework the old park. So, this is just a concept idea. That's on the left side, that's the existing more park facility. And then over on the right is a list of high, moderate, and low priority items that came out of the action plan. And so, here is an idea of how more park might be rearranged to fit some of those action items in. Folks wouldn't have to be phased in all at once. You can take that and get some pieces. But the idea is to give you a concept of how you could take one of the most popular parks and rework that to have the action plan items fit there. So, I know that's a lot of information. There's a lot of months that we've been working on this. We've had some great input from staff, like I said, from park board, from the citizens. And this plan really isn't meant to just sit on the shelf. This is really meant to be a tool for budget planning annually so that your park system can grow as Van Alstine is growing. So, with that, that's an overview. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I'm number 10. Does this consider taking the action necessary regarding passage of the ordinance adopted for Parks' master plan? I think at this form, it's a first that everybody had a chance to see this, and I'd like our councilmen to have a chance to digest it. It's just, I really appreciate all the ideas. I would really like to have some input, I'd say for some citizens too. Make this available to the public. I want to thank you for all the work you've made. It's quite tough, I guess. Also, I'd like to do our park board to see, compare what we need, and I've been involved in this so, I would like to hear from everybody involved, all stakeholders, that's the board, the city, and the citizens. Especially citizens. This is a little work on your behalf. We want it to be what you need and what you want. However, I do have a P P committed to rule soft law. We want those tools to have better control. But then, I guess, I'm number 10. Just to give you a... We just need to handle that for a few minutes.
Continue to listen.
Is that considering taking action for the ordinance?
You can either do it tonight, or you can continue it to the next meeting.
I just want to go out to everybody in council to have a potential work at the... The plan is over two weeks.
Steve, can I say something? There has been citizens input in there. So, there were actual people came in. So, just so you know, they came in, they presented all this. We had the meetings. We've had, was it two, I believe two citizens. So, this really hasn't been done. It was, this is just the final, I want to say, presentation. The nice topic, if everyone's saying it. So, the citizens have had a chance to put in. That's where all the priorities that Elizabeth spoke with, and that's where all that came home. So, just so you know, it has been presented several times. This is just kind of the final topic that will be actually put in your repertoire when people come to either bring their businesses or subdivisions here.
One of the questions that I had is where is, like, the renderings we looked at the last one for some of the newer parts?
That is a different, that's a different project.
So, is that considered as the master plan?
Let me, let me help clarify this. This is the master plan that was started over a year ago. So, as pointed out, we've had several sessions with citizens to provide input into that. The Parks Board, like you said, has had two meetings to update it as we're getting closer to the final project. And the rendering that's included in this was done as a courtesy to the city just to give you an idea of what could potentially happen. It wasn't that the bill back.
It was concept only, it wasn't my perspective or perspective. It was concept only.
So, the next step in the process is what you saw last time, Brian, which was to start developing renderings. Now, there's already action being taken on this. I mean, we have a shared use path underway. We have three more grants that Bob is helping us apply for to extend our walking trails in the city. We're working on park design for future development. And we're using it as a guiding light. But that's what this tool is, is a guiding light. I guess I need...
One we bring to them tonight as far as...
Here, Marle, in the plan, there's different options for funding sources, state grants, and what each funding source is going to be. So, with the master plan in place, it gives Lane and the Parks Board leeway to show the state of Texas or whoever that we're not just blindly asking for money. We don't hope we're going, we actually have a plan.
And I am meeting with one of those agencies tomorrow that, you know, is a funding pool for the city, and it's nice to be able, and I would hand them this package regardless. But it's nice to have an approved master plan.
Marle, I would say that this is kind of like, when somebody comes to use this subdivision, and it's a proposal, this is what they're saying under the...
No, I know all that. But I was making sure, because the way this is written up and this appearing on this last page is word greener than this. And I thought that the confirm was not the case, and that's not the case.
And it can be updated at any time we would like to update it.
I'm just giving you the ability to move forward and get the grants, still those things I told you about.
Every, every major grant that I see...
It's basically a business plan. Like, you want to go ask for money.
Every grant that I see that state or federal wants to see a copy of our Parks' master plan.
Just so they know we're not hugging you.
Right.
That's fine.
Marle, that's it. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance. Do you need to put the number on there? As written. More of the Park's master plan. Motion second. Motion is second, further discussion. All favor of the citizens.
I found it nice, and one of the main points for me was that the Parks Board, the names of the Parks Board members on this master plan are different than the Parks Board members now. But the fact that they all agreed on it, from one Parks Board to the next Parks Board, really says something about that.
I found it amazing how much of my standard punch.
Yeah.
It was nice that some of the lights came in there, and I was just, got locked up on the... I have a motion is second, any further discussion? All favor of the Senate.
Aye.
Number 12, City Manager.
No, Rizlin?
Oh, yes, the other more... Consider taking the action necessary regarding authorize that for how to permit for road to do this to Kelly Lane, favor of the Trump Lane, escrow funds.
Currently, the city has in an escrow account for Kelly Lane $489,784.39, maybe off a penny or two in my calculation. But that's what we have escrowed for the paving of Kelly Lane in, oh, years. That was to be concrete. But we do, we have no additional contributors to this fund in the foreseeable future. It would probably take us out five years before we would get another development to pay into this. And their contribution may be another 200,000 or 300,000 into it. We cannot afford currently with that amount to concrete Kelly Lane from end to end. We would just do a portion of it. I would propose that we asphalt Kelly Lane so we don't have to deal with the issues of chip seal on that road because it receives a great deal of traffic. We can widen the road. We can put an asphalt overlay of two inches on top of the existing base. We have just restoned that road last week, so it's got a great base. Widen the road and asphalt it from end to end for an estimate of $300,000. So, I am asking council to authorize my going out with a solicitation to proceed bids to asphalt Kelly Lane and move forward with getting that done as quickly as we can.
Do you have project time on how long that would take?
How long the process is to pay that?
No, the project to asphalt it from end to end, from start to finish, how long would that take? To why do they do that on Kelly?
I've asphalted streets in other cities, and it depends on who your developer or who the company is that is awarded the bid. But a road of that length would probably take about two weeks, and it would require traffic control because we're widening the road. They would open up half the road to traffic and then pave half, and then come back and do the other half.
That's great. My question is, do you still have a lot of the traffic?
Yeah, you still have traffic going through there, but it's, it's a manageable process.
We're looking at probably, you know, 60 days for the bidding process. And we're looking at numbers, 60.
The best part about Kelly Lane is we have built a phenomenal base. You know, we've got a good platform to put asphalt on top of it and have it stay for 15 years.
Should we include markings on the road to as low and wide as?
Yeah, we'd striping the whole 10 yards.
How much wider would we just...
Ma'am? It'd be, I think, 21 feet wide as above?
It's 21, too.
That's what it would be. Yeah, 20 to 21 feet, two inches.
I'm not sure what it is.
I want to say it's 16.
Or like 15.
Probably 16.
It's not very well... Well, I mean, counting the rocks on the...
You're saying the other side. Well, what car, that person could be on the road down and put up here and do that.
So, I think, I think, while not the, while not the ideal solution, I think this is a solution to chip sealing a road that has entirely too much traffic to handle chip seal.
Any other questions?
Ms. Katrina, you want to make a motion on this? Has your family got a wrench in your tire for that road the other day?
I'm just talking about...
I guess I tire, I screwed my daughter's tire.
I know we're laughing at that, but I mean, Kelly's been a thorn in the side for...
It's, yeah, I mean, it could happen anywhere, but I didn't know it would happen at all. But I saw it. So, yeah, I do make a motion to, any word?
Robert has seen that there's two big escrow funds to...
I'll make a motion to authorize City Manager to advertise bids to asphalt or ask them to do those to Kelly Lane to be paid from the Kelly...
I'll second that.
Motion second, we'll throw to discussion. All of favor, say yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we can get a report. Focus of my time over the past month has been budget related. Property tax information's been received from the county tax assessor following or allowing the general fund budget proposal to be developed. The utility budget requires additional work with the city waiting on the water rate study to be complete. All data requested by the organization conducting the water rate study has been provided and the process is moving along as quickly as possible. Construction projects underway at the time of this writing include the shared use path that will connect the middle school to the high school. The new water and wastewater lines along West Jefferson are nearing completion, and several of our roads have been recently paved over the past week. Plans are underway to remove the old concrete piers that once held the grandstands at North Park. The city's goal is to have the piers and the press box removed in the next sixty days. We have a company that is donating their time and equipment to make that happen, so I'm dependent upon that person finding the time to make that happen. Sanitation Solutions has donated the rollaway so that we can shed ourselves of all of that stuff. The scoreboard located at North Park will be taken down. The city will store that scoreboard for future application. Somewhere in the future, we'll want it hanging on a wall someplace like this. I thought somebody wanted that. No, that was the other one, and it's gone. And that's the ISB they have. Additionally, the electrical panel at North Park, which is attached to two telephone poles, is raining and needs to come down. We're getting bids to replace that with a smaller fuse panel. Negotiations with Rizland, the Matchway Project, continue, and I remain confident that the city and Rizland can come to an agreement that will better the development agreement for both the developer and the city. The initial shovel of dirt was toned over last Friday, and Rizland expects to start moving dirt, and I think they have already done that. The city manager has held several meetings with a large commercial real estate development company out of Dallas. They're expressing interest in bringing new business to the city, but they provided no specificity at this point in time. They're doing their due diligence, they're providing them with their basic needs to help them along. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments from council?
I just wanted to remind, I guess the, there's a map up here on this one. So music in the park for the next time, the twentieth, and we'll do the live album for the drive. Music in the park. And also the parks, CDC and EDC are hosting a costumes in the park on the twenty-fourth, it's Saturday, from ten to eleven at Old Park. There'll be some giveaways of costumes. Just want to make everyone for coming and don't wait left, but they really did do a really good job and they were very patient. We had a ton of changes, probably two hours worth of changes after they thought they were finished that the new Parks Board had them add and adjust. They did a really good job.
Um, is it my turn to go a little?
You know, I'm always very consistent, I do.
Yeah, always. Do my little gift to Lex School on Thursday, so lots of kids waiting on buses, especially early in the morning and things of that nature, so everybody's routinely up turning. Listening to Lane talk about the grandstands coming down, the press box coming down at Old Panther Stadium, I remember we first moved here, we went to the games at Old Panther Stadium and sat out there on the wood bleachers and the band barely made it, you know, pass it around, seventeen kids in the band. But the news that we get that the old press box is coming down, the old stands are coming down, is right on the heels of, they just put a new ranger field over at high school. I knew it was, they gorgeous wouldn't build if you hadn't over there for a little while. So the, the old goes away, as it should, because those are dangerous stands right now, really dangerous, but just by the ironically, our, our town is changing. We turn and we change, so again, thank you for...
Thank you all for coming out, and again, thank you to all the volunteers that we have, thank you to all of our city staff and everything that you guys do. Lane puts a ton of hours into talking with a ton of people, negotiating, doing all the things that's in the best interest of the city, and then help provide in the staff, council, with everything that we need to be able to make informed decisions for you guys. Just to kind of go on, please point there, we are growing, and our job is to help articulate what you guys want in that growth. You know, this is a job that we do completely volunteering of, and there's a lot of different opinions, I guess you could say, out there. A lot of it comes from social media, but, you know, we, we are a town of one, we are Van Alstine. We don't want to try to imitate other big cities like Plano or even you could call Anna somewhat of that, we want to do it the right way. And we just are very, I'm very thankful, I know this town's very thankful that they have put up y'all. And I think more than ever, it's time to make sure that we're standing together, we all get on the same page and be excited about what's coming, so it's all I say.
The only thing I have is the chamber event this Thursday, it's the after party that we do with Anna. I don't know if you had that. Do you have that on your list? You don't have it, excuse me. Anyway, it's at Pull Bay, six o'clock, um, this Thursday. All I have, and coming out everybody. We have a reduced crowd this evening. I think we lost out to the farmer's market and Uva's.
Maybe we should have council at the one.
You go set outside.
Yeah, not, sorry.
Okay, and as always, thank everybody for coming, all of our wonderful volunteers that are here. It's always a blessing to have everyone here, and I'd like to give them all credit for helping make our community what it is. Our small business owners and owners speaking here, but thank them for, for paying the life blood in our, in our community and keeping, keeping things going. Thank our city staff. Would also like to, like our concerned citizens that show up to the meetings, those that haven't been able to be here, welcome back. And thank everybody for, for being a part of this great community. A couple of announcements, I did have a chamber announcement. Tomorrow's Chamber of Breakfast, right here, eight o'clock in the morning. Come see what your chamber's doing. We usually have a pretty good turnout, we have good breakfast, and we have good programs, so come see what your chamber's doing. Also, Anna, here, the Van Alstine Center's there.
It's next, it's next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chamber.
You scared me.
What is today?
She, she...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Please, council meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Council's meeting, that's what it is.
You're welcome to come by if you have...
Bring some breakfast.
We're here. But some breakfast tomorrow.
Yeah, bacon, bacon cheese, this is for me.
That's right.
Yes, well, yes. Senior Center is presenting a senior information series for anyone that's interested. They're having speakers in August, September, and October. August is, August third, what was the calendar you said?
The next one is...
September seventh. September seventh, yes, is Wills Power and Attorney, Ben and Power and Attorney Trusts and more. In October, we have a speaker talking about reverse mortgage and other financing options for, for seniors. Everybody's invited, no age requirement, please come with questions, and there will be revisions.
After the breakfast.
I see. Yeah, yeah. And a shout out to KAB, our next meeting is September.
Sixteen.
September sixteenth. Please come, see what's going on with KAB. We're welcoming new members, very, very expensive membership fee, and lots of activities to be a part of the community and our president, City Manager.
We also have a free watermelon event. It's going to be at the farmer's market, the Tuesday following that whole, the labor day, starting from the labor day event. So we'll be doing that and having water and it'll kind of be a lot of fun for just blowing off the summer. Have some watermelon, get sticky, we've got wet wipes, you know? Just so that for people to have fun, you know?
Well, as you can see tonight, we didn't conduct as much business, but we talked about quality and lack issues, and we're sort of, it's really kind of, kind of, council deals, we are going, and we want to make sure we are responding to the needs of what you guys see. Some of it, we don't have control, is about the nature of the growth. What we will do is manage how that growth occurs, and that's why we need input consistently from the citizens. And it doesn't mean we'd like you to camp, camp out in the manner of your office, but, you know, we have emails, oh, so, you know, when something occurs to you, you know, give us a range, choose an email, that, that lets us know that you're engaged and we're performing when you're at, because it's not, we will run off on our own device, and we will create off under that. But here's, here's one last thing that I want to take along. We have a letter from citizens, "Dear City Manager, Mayor, and City Council members, it is so great seeing so much progress being made in our town, Van Alstine. I was excited when the streets downtown were striped, it really made a huge difference. Now, farmer lines and culvert are being replaced in different places. Much thanks for working on Old Town, Van Alstine." That's a, Suzanne, right? So, thank you for, thank you, it just goes to show that, you know, all efforts are noticed and, and we appreciate it as well. Once again, so if you have an idea and a place you can take it out, we'll do just that. So for that, now, I'll, I'll, Mr. Boyce, I'm going to do the road, drive us that hard on soon, he's going to be happy, so.